Okay. Happy November 14th at the Planning Commission. Let's call the meeting to order and get started with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And you have more voice. Okay. Are there any agenda changes?
No, there are not.
Thank you. We'll get started with the public comment period. Is there anyone who would like to speak to a topic not on the agenda today? None. Let's move on to the consent agenda. Is there any member of the commission or public who would like to remove an item from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I guess we are open to a motion.
Which motion would you like? Approval minutes or...
Yes, can we do all the minutes together?
Yeah, just a motion to approve the consent calendar would approve them all in one motion.
Yes.
I hear Commissioner Rooster clearing his throat. I've got one correction on the last one.
All right.
I have no corrections. Oh, my gosh. Minutes for 10:24 on page three has a missing apostrophe.
Holy moly. Correct that immediately.
Down there, under motion on number three, planning director's denial, it should be director apostrophe, yes. And that's it.
Okay.
I move that we approve all these minutes as corrected.
Second.
Second, I'm sorry.
Correct.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None? Okay. Move on to the regular agenda. Item 1, 2019, oh my gosh. California land conservation contracts and agriculture preserves. There you go. Shortly July.
Before we get into this, since I was appointed to the commission by Supervisor Garamendi, whose family's trust is involved in this matter, in order to avoid any possible appearance of favoritism or bias, and although I understand I don't, I'm not required to do this, I'm going to recuse myself from this matter. And I'll be out there if you'll let me know when you're back.
Thank you. Gina will lead us through the many, through all the details. Well, we won't be naming each and every parcel, because I think I counted 73. We'll kind of summarize things.
Might be another reason why I'm recusing.
Yeah. So after many years, we are finally here wrapping things up for the Garamendi family. Just so, let's start with a little background. So back on February 16, 1970, Ag Preserve contract number 56 was established for Raymond Garamendi. The land consisting of 2,000, now consisting of 2,040.26 acres, the Garamendi Ranch spans east of Highway 26 and both east and west sides of Highway 49, south of the town of Mon Calumie Hill for approximately three miles. Historically, beef cattle have been the primary agricultural production on the ranch. They've reported a gross annual income, most recently of $90,000 from the production in addition to a $30,000 lease income. Now, the Ag Preserve land within the Garamendi family trust is to be distributed amongst the recipients. The division includes establishment of six new separate agriculture preserve contracts, and those include agriculture preserve contract number 367 totaling 284.36 acres for Megan Long. This also includes the amendment of two parcels, the amendment, zoning amendment of two parcels that during my review of the applications at hand, realized that two of the parcels were never originally zoned appropriately, Ag Preserve, for some reason, which is actually detailed in your report. So we just need a little housekeeping in that matter and get those zoned appropriately. So the next one is Ag Preserve contract number 368 totaling 662.24 acres for Robert Garamendi. The third contract is number 369 totaling 409.73 acres for Catherine and Bridget Connolly. The fourth application, number 370, totals 116.80 acres again for Catherine and Bridget Connolly. The sixth, or I should say the fifth contract, number 371 totaling 191.12 acres for Samuel Garamendi, and the last, the sixth contract, number 672 totaling 276.85 acres for John Garamendi. When it all came out in the wash, there was about 99.16 acres of non-contiguous parcels going to different folks in the, in the family, which did not qualify for the Ag Preserve. So the trust actually filed a notice of non-renewal for that portion of land. All the applications proposed to continue to utilize the land for cattle grazing. Scott Onetto, our Calaveras County Farm Advisor, conducted a feasibility study, finding the individual preserves are viable agricultural land, which are able to meet the minimum requirements to be eligible for the Ag Preserve. The properties are capable of producing a gross annual income of $54.45, or I should say, I'm thinking acres now, $54.45 thereabout per acre, which exceeds the minimum $2,000 requirement to be eligible for the Ag Preserve. All of these applications have been considered by the board-appointed Agriculture Advisory Committee, and both they, as well as our Agricultural Commissioner, recommend the approval of all the contracts, and that's what's before you today. Are there any questions?
We also, just wanted to note that we, I think we provided you, or Gina's about to pass out a revised resolution that...
Oh, I didn't make additional copies, but I was going to get to that. We did, Julie had a suggestion to kind of beef up the evidence on number two finding. Basically, we wanted to clarify that, that each contract was meeting the minimum requirements, and that it wasn't the property as a whole of, you know, the previous contract, that each individual contract was actually making those findings. So if you want, I can read that evidence into the record, since I didn't provide you with a copy of it. So again, finding number two evidence, it reads, "Calaveras County General Plan designates the subject property as resource production and working land. The purpose of the AP zone is to protect and preserve lands for intensive agricultural and ranching production. Ag Preserve zoning applies to lands within, applies to lands for which a Williamson Act contract has been executed. The Ag Preserve zone is a resource zone and is consistent in the land use designations described in the County General Plan." This is where the change comes in. "Each of the six proposed new contracts exceeds the minimum parcel size requirement of 100 acres for, for the inclusion of ranchland within the estimate, within estimated that each of the six proposed new contracts will exceed the $2,000 minimum annual income requirement to qualify for the agriculture preserve. The feasibility study conducted by the Calaveras County Farm Advisor confirms the preserves have the potential to earn a gross annual income from cattle production of $54.45 per acre of land. The land has been utilized for cattle production and under the restrictions of the Williamson Act since 1970." That was language taken directly out of the staff report, so we didn't get real crafty at the last minute, but we just wanted to include that, which kind of further clarified that evidence for finding number two.
Is the, is the revised general plan effective now?
Yes, and it's reiterated here.
And then, the resolution as revised refers to the feasibility study conducted by the Calaveras County Farm Advisor?
Yes.
Actually, isn't he with the University of California Extension Service and serves several counties?
You're correct, but he, his title is Calaveras County Farm Advisor, but you are correct, he serves as a farm advisor for many other counties besides Calaveras.
The only other suggestion I had on that resolution is the third sentence that says, "The AP zoning is a resource zone and is consistent in the land use designation." Should the word "in" be "with"?
With, okay.
Yeah. Oh, I did have another one. In the, in the title, the third line of the title of resolution recommending etc., the word "simultaneously" is not spelled right?
Oh, yeah. Are there any further questions for Gina?
No.
Does any member of the public have any comments? Would that, would you like to provide any further information?
I have come before you a number of times about different properties being split up, and I'm trying to be impartial, and I believe that the public has a right to know that a lot of the parcel splits at this particular time in history in Calaveras County is to speed the way for marijuana growing. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Seeing none, we'll close the public comments and bring it back to the commission. Any other comments on the resolution?
Not from me.
No comment.
I think we are ready for a recommendation. Staff recommends the Planning Commission pass a motion to adopt Resolution 2019-033 recommending the Board of Supervisors approve applications 2019, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, and 22 to disestablish Ag Preserve contract number 56 for Raymond Garamendi and establish agriculture preserves number 367, 368, 369, 370, 371, and 372, and adopt an ordinance amending the zoning of Assessor's parcel number 162401 from unclassified, and Assessor parcel number 163817 from rural residential existing parcel size to AP, agriculture preserve, to signify the properties are under the restriction of the Williamson Act and based on the findings included therein as amended.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So the motion passes with Commissioner Lattish abstaining, accusing himself, and she'll ready. And this will likely be the last time you see me before the holidays, so I want to wish everyone happy holidays, and we'll see you next year. Thank you, Gina.
You do say.
Could we, somebody let him know we're ready to let him back in.
He's hiding in the back room.
Yep, both. Both are him. I mean, both him, that's what I'm... Sorry, that was confusing. Mr. Pitt, can you help us?
All right. Today, we've got project 2019-068, which is a request for an as-built variance for Joan Narducci. As you can see, the location on project is 220 Calypso Beach Drive in Copperopolis. Parcel, APN 061, 062, 011, is 0.41 acres and has a general plan land use designation of residential low density with a zoning designation of R1 PD, single-family residential planned development. Zoning setbacks in the Calypso Beach Villas at Hunter Estates, Unit 4, are a little unique. They aren't the usual R1 zoning setbacks, major differences being that the front and rear setbacks are 10 feet instead of the usual 20 feet in most R1 districts. Project description, applicant is requesting approval of an as-built variance to reduce the front building setback from 10 feet to 7.8 feet to accommodate an existing home and attached garage. While reviewing my documents for today, I noticed that in the resolution I put 7.7 feet, so, when in fact the applicant is asking for a reduction of to 7.8 feet. So if the resolution is approved, it will have to be amended, of course.
Nice catch.
I knew if I didn't catch it, one of you guys would have. All right. Little background on this one. Variance applicant is requesting to accommodate an existing dwelling and attached garage that was built within the setback in 2006. The Calypso Beach subdivisions have a long and often complicated history with county. Lot line inaccuracies, setback encroachments, and other procedural mistakes made by former developers, builders, inspectors have contributed to multiple issues within this area of Copperopolis. The building permit for a new dwelling was issued for this parcel on January 12 of 2006, and a foundation setback inspection was done and signed off on January 17 of 2006. For some reason, the final inspection was never done, or I cannot find record of a final inspection, and a certificate of occupancy was never issued for this home. The applicant purchased the home in 2009, was not aware of its non-conforming status. Area view, as you can see, our GIS lines are a little bit off, but you get the general idea. Here is the reason for the application for a variance. As you can see, a small portion of the dwelling and the attached garage encroached into the 10-foot setback, with the largest encroachment being 2.2 feet at one point right there in the middle with the red square. All right. In order to be approved or granted, a variance must meet each of the four very specific findings outlined in the county code. There is the county code for variance. Finding A, the very first finding, says that an exceptional or extraordinary circumstance must apply to the property over which the owners have no control. Although there isn't anything about the parcel itself that differentiates it from surrounding properties, the exceptional circumstances do apply to the fact that the applicant purchased the home in 2009 after it had already been constructed, and the county previously inspected and approved and signed off on its construction, allowing the construction to proceed. Finding B, the second finding, states that the variance is necessary for preservation of a property right. The applicant discovered the non-conforming status of their property while applying for a building permit for a retaining mall. The issue of a lack of certificate of occupancy was also discovered at this time. A certificate of occupancy is an essential right to legally constructing and inhabiting a dwelling as is allowed in the R1 zoning designation. Third finding, finding C, says that the variance would not be materially detrimental to surrounding property. As you can do the math, it's existed in its current footprint for 13 years, when construction was completed and prior to the current owner taking possession. In that time, the location of the dwelling, attached garage have not affected any surrounding properties, county right-of-way, or overall character of the neighborhood in any way that could be considered materially detrimental. Fourth and final finding, finding D, states that the variance requested is the minimum variance that would alleviate the occupancy. The point at which the dwelling encroaches in its setback the deepest is 7.8 feet away from the property boundary. Therefore, a variance to the setback requirement from 10 feet to 7.8 feet resulting in a 2.2 foot change would be sufficient to allow the occupant to continue the process of obtaining a certificate of occupancy for their existing dwelling and attached garage, and would not allow any further encroachment to occur. As far as the environmental review goes, setback variances that do not result in the creation of new parcel are categorically exempt from CEQA pursuant to section of 15305A. In conclusion, the dwelling was constructed in 2006 by obtaining legal building permits and getting a setback inspection approval and sign off. For whatever reason, that shall remain lost to history. A final inspection was never done, and a certificate of occupancy was never issued. The applicant purchased the home in 2009, unaware of its non-conforming status, and is now in the process to correct the past errors with the property and obtain a certificate of occupancy. The applicant meets all four findings required for a variance to be granted. Any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. When I first read the staff report, I thought it was just the garage that was in violation, but this, your diagram with the red...
It's portion of the house also.
Portion of the house.
Very corner of the garage is setback just slightly from the house.
So I think, the only concern I have, and what I was going to suggest on the resolution, is that the Planning Department's conditions say all future structures or additions shall be at minimum setbacks, so we don't give the impression that the, that the house could be expanded out to this new line.
Right. Yeah.
We had one other modification to the resolution that we wanted to add under the evidence in, under A. Tim, did you want to add that?
Was the, the county had previously inspected and approved the foundation, allowing construction to proceed.
So we'd add that sentence to that finding?
Yeah. I would also put in the date that she purchased the home, in other words, 2009, because that ties into finding C, which is, hasn't been material detrimental.
Add that in to finding C.
I would add it in finding A, where it says the applicant purchased the home in 2009.
Oh, okay.
It was up front.
Yeah, I think what we're trying to say is that the variance would only allow continued use of the existing construction.
Right.
That no future construction would be allowed. It's not like we've created a new setback.
Correct. I think we're trying to restrict it to that, just to, so the process for the certificate of occupancy for the existing dwelling can proceed.
Well, is, is that, is that inherent in the approval of an as-built variance? Because that's what the resolution approves, is an as-built variance? I mean, I would hope so.
Yes, I mean, that's, that's inherited, and the condition that, as modified, as suggested by Commissioner Lattish, clearly states that, you know, no addition or new construction would violate the setback requirement. So this, this setback is for this structure?
Yes.
Or this variance is for this structure?
Any other questions?
No.
Would the applicant like to add anything to this?
Don't believe they are here.
Is there any member of the public who would like to speak to this item? None, we'll close the public comment portion of the hearing. Any further questions or thoughts? Okay.
I think as amended, the resolution would be fine.
Hear the recommendation.
All right. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt Resolution 2019-032 as amended, approving as-built, as-built variance, 2019-068 for Joan Narducci.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, as amended.
Pass is 5-0. Thank you very much.
And just for the record, this action is final unless appealed to the Board of Supervisors within 15 calendar days.
I'll give you guys a minute to get swapped over.
Good morning.
Good morning. Would you like to talk to us about item three?
Sure. Madeline Flandreau, Planner Two, presenting an extension of time, 2016-063 for ten to parcel map 2006-007. This is for Maxwell Freeman. This is a request for a four-year extension of time to extend the expiration date of approved ten to parcel map 2006-007 in order to record phases three and four. On June 1, 2016, Mr. Freeman submitted a request of the Planning Department for an extension of time to extend the expiration date for a recordation of... to extend the expiration date for a recordation of Phase 3, which is parcel 3, and Phase 4, which is parcel 4. Subsequent to this request for the extension in 2016, planning department staff was asked for the extension to be placed on hold, and the applicant is now ready to record the final map. So, I'm going to explain a little bit about the background of the entire project, just to clarify and explain the progression and the current status. The location of the subject property, APNs 050, 01, 0056, 057, 058, and 059, which total 522 acres, are located at 6897 Harding Road in Valley Springs, just at the southern end of Rancho Calaveras. The aerial image, this is our county 2018 GIS image, which shows the parcel in a largely undeveloped area encompassing the steep-walled canyon of the Calaveras River and its tributaries, which is downstream from New Hogan Dam. This is the tentative parcel map, which was approved by the board on June 14th, 2011, to divide two original parcels into four 40-acre parcels. And I'm going to try to, sorry, there's a lot going on in this map, but you can see this is parcel 1, parcel 2, parcel 3, parcel 4, and then this unsubdivided remainder that wraps around here. At the time of approval, the applicant had 36 months to meet all the conditions of approval, making the tentative map's expiration date June 14th, 2014. However, with the passage of SB 116, the map was extended 24 months, which made the expiration date June 14th, 2016. In 2013, a modification to the permit was approved by the commission, which allowed for the recordation of the final map to be done in phases, as well as a road modification for a reduction in the width of the access road in order to preserve a certain number of mature oak trees and reduce the depth of the required road cuts. The phased tentative parcel map approved was identical to the previously approved tentative parcel map, but identified each of the four lots as separate phases for recordation purposes. And on December 30th, 2015, a final map was recorded, creating Parcels 1 and 2 and a remainder. Which brings us to 2016 and the expiration of the map for Phases 3 and 4. The planning department staff was asked for the extension to be placed on hold as the applicant recognized that the construction of the on-site road would adversely impact these oak trees and other plant species, as well as cause extensive erosion due to the nature of the topography along the Calaveras River. The, this area, steep-walled canyons and its tributaries of the river downstream of the dam, there are areas that are within flood zone and dam inundation area. So, this boundary line adjustment, excuse me, the applicant was working with the planning and surveyor and pursued a certificate of compliance and a determination of substantial conformance in order to complete this boundary line adjustment. This was done in August of 2018, which allowed for, essentially adjusted Parcels 1 and 2 and the unsubdivided remainder to provide direct access and frontages to Harding Road, which accommodates the creation of Parcels 3 and 4. An initial study and mitigated negative declaration was prepared for the original approval of the tentative parcel map in accordance with CEQA and adopted by the board at the same time as the original project approval on June 14th, 2011. Although the project access has changed, circumstances have not occurred that would cause the county to prepare additional environmental review. The boundary line adjustment redesigned the access and eliminated the need for the on-site road, which is a reduction in impacts, therefore, the mitigated negative declaration is still adequate. This extension of time was routed to all responsible agencies and none had any objections or concerns. Calaveras County Code 1608040 establishes provisions for the extension of an approved tentative parcel map. While County Code 040A does not expressly require the commission make any specific findings in order to approve a discretionary extension for a tentative parcel map, the county has consistently applied the standard in 040B for subdivision map extensions when considering requests for discretionary extensions of parcel maps in order to remain consistent. The standard for an extension under the section requires a demonstration of a good faith effort to support approval of an extension. An extension of time for, excuse me, period not to exceed a total of six years on top of the initial 36 months may be granted by the planning commission. If the commission chooses to grant the extension, it shall make a finding based upon evidence in the public record that the project is consistent with the general plan and zoning requirements that are currently in place. The project meets the minimum parcel sizes of the residential agriculture zoning classification and the land use designation, both past and current. The mitigated negative declaration is still adequate, so the extension of time will not have a significant effect on the environment, and all the previous mitigation measures and conditions of approval still apply. So, in conclusion, it's apparent that the applicant has demonstrated a good faith effort to meet the conditions of tentative parcel map 2006, sorry, 2006-007. The applicant recorded Parcels 1 and 2 in 2015 and wishes to record Parcels 3 and 4 and complete all of the conditions of approval. The extension of time was filed timely, however, the applicant recognized that construction of the on-site road would adversely impact oak trees, as well as cause extensive erosion on the steep slopes. And since filing the extension request, the applicant has worked with planning staff and the surveyor and pursued a certificate of compliance, a determination of substantial conformance, and a boundary line adjustment to develop other access options. Conditions of approval for TPM 2006-007 are set forth in Resolution Number 2011-020. In addition, the 2013 modification to the existing permit modified the conditions to reflect the proposed phasings, and those conditions are set forth in Resolution Number 2013-010. And I believe that the applicant's engineer, Mr. Corales, is here, if you have any further questions for him.
Could you just show us on the map how the access from the road is working? I couldn't quite understand that map. I don't know where the road is.
So, the, I apologize, I had a sliding here before that showed the original access. The, these lines here, this is parcel 1 and parcel 2, these lines were adjusted. And so, here's Harding Road that comes down, little cul-de-sac. There was originally this 60-foot-wide access road, essentially, to gain access to Parcels 3 and 4, and it's been modified now, so all parcels have fronted along Harding Road. And perhaps the engineer can explain that just a little bit further, just to clarify.
Are there any other questions for Madeline?
At one point, there was a road modification that was done that decreased the width of the road to like nine-foot lanes. Is that irrelevant now with each parcel having direct access to Harding Road?
It is.
Okay, good.
Yes.
This extension would expire in June of 2020, next year.
Yes.
Does the commission have the authority to grant a longer extension if one was needed?
Yes.
Madeline, I thought I saw up there that they were ready to record their maps.
They are ready to record, yes.
So, maybe we can ask the applicant if they feel confident. Would you like to come up and answer a couple of questions? We want to make sure this will be enough time for you.
Yes, I'm Lex Corales with Siegfried Engineering from Stockton. I'd like to just take this, begin this, and take an opportunity to thank the planning staff, Director Mar, Deborah Lewis, and Madeline Nowen, and also the county surveyor for being cooperative and assisting us with this project. And as you can, it's evident to you, we've been working on this since 2006. We've had several attorneys and planning directors through this, over this period of time. But now, we're at a point where, yes, we're able to record the map. We will already, today, I'm going to be submitting the final version of the map that meets all the requirements for subdivision map act and also for the planning codes of the Calaveras County. We went through a lot of process. I don't know, I wasn't here, the original presentations, that was originally done by Michael Haycom, the attorney for the owner. But we went through a long process since 2006. We went through an initial study, we obtained a mitigated negative declaration. We filed a tentative map and got it approved finally, after five years in 2011, filed the first phase that created parcel 1 and 2 in 2015. And then, since that time, the problem we've always had because of the attempt to preserve the natural wild habitat of the area. It was always a concern to us about the roadway, because we would have had to build up the, one of the reasons we reduced the width was because we could see that if we had a wide, normal 60-foot-wide right-of-way and a normal standard roadway for the county, we would have had encroached down into the canyons, and we would have, as Madeline explained, we would have had to remove some trees, which we were trying to avoid. But the lot-line adjustment, it took us a long time to come up with this because we had to meet the minimum width requirements for, for example, parcel 2. You can see that that has a 20-foot, again, to remember now, 20-foot or 15-foot access. Parcel 1 has always a natural access, there's a beautiful gate to parcel 1. And in Parcels 3 and 4, the way it was originally submitted in a tentative map just went directly to the north line of the property. And we don't have a drawing, and I didn't bring a drawing, but that's what we're going to be submitting today. What we did with parcel 4 was created a flag lot, so that it has now direct access to Harding Road, and parcel 2 also has, or parcel 3 also has direct access to Harding Road. This eliminated the need for a standard roadway because they now all have access. And the access is what is there now, it's a paved, basically a paved driveway, which meets all the requirements of the current county codes and the subdivision map act. One of the, as I mentioned, one of the intents and what makes these four 40-acre parcels attractive to people and attractive now is the continuance of the wildlife. And so, we have done four things, maybe five things, that has helped create this. We have dedicated, in the mapping, on first phase, we've dedicated, you can see the dashed curved line. That is, that's an access from Harding Road directed to the Calaveras River. And if you've ever been in that area, it's a beautiful access roadway that was built, that's been there for years and years, down to the Calaveras River. And it's a beautiful view down into the Calaveras River. We've dedicated a 100-foot easement to the public directly over Calaveras River from one end of the property all the way down to the other end. We've dedicated 75% of the property to a conservancy that was created, so that, there's 120 acres of the four lots, 160 acres of the, that's taken by the four lots, but there's 350 acres that's unsubdivided remainder, which are the canyons that Madeline's referring to, down into the river. And this allows the natural terrain, the natural habitat to remain in place. And so, we're now into the final step. We've finally come up with a solution for the last two phases. And with this extension, which we asked to be held in advance, so we've come up with the solutions with this extension, we will now be able to complete the final subdivision of the four lots. And again, I'd like to thank you. It's been a long process, but I think we're finally at the end of the process. Thank you very much. Do you have any other questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
First, I want to say, it sounds as if this is a real credit to your firm and to the owners that allowing public access and allowing for wildlife circulation and this sort of thing. It's highly commendable. My only question is, each of the lots 3 and 4, are they at least 40 acres?
Yes, yes.
That's good.
More so, they're about 40, almost 42 acres each.
That's great, because under the new general plan, we'd have problems if they were not.
I had a question, why was one lot serviced by a well and the other three by CCW?
Yes.
Or CCWD, I'm sorry?
That was, I don't recall all the reasons, but that was one of the requirements of the initial study in the environmental impact report. And that was one of the reasons that it was delayed, because it was a long process to get them to, for us to get a will serve letter from them.
An existing well, and so all the additional ones needed to be served by. So, you are absolutely confident in the four-year extension being adequate for you to resolve any remaining challenges?
Yes, I've told the owner that we hope to have this map recorded this year, because right after this meeting, I'm making the last, hopefully, the last corrections by the county surveyor as far as the mapping process itself, yes. And also, today, I'm submitting the final dedications of the dam inundation conservation easements to the conservancy.
Thank you. Any other questions? Is there any other member of the public who would like to comment on this item?
Again, I would like to say that any division of property makes it easier for marijuana growing to proliferate. Thank you.
Commissioners, are there any additional questions? Any comments on the resolution?
Yes. On the resolution, page 2, top of the page, there's a sentence that speaks about the current general plan use designations, et cetera. And then, the next sentence refers to the project being also consistent with the updated general plan. It seems to me the only reference that's needed is to the now-existing general plan. So, I would simply strike the sentence that begins, "The current general plan use designations, et cetera", because it's not the current plan. It's actually a legal nothing at this point. And just say, the next sentence, just say, "The project is consistent with the general plan, et cetera." And the only other question I had is, under paragraph 3, the letter that requested the extension point out several things that the applicant has done to complete the conditions of the map. And it seems to me it would be appropriate to include those in the resolution because they have done a lot. they've, they have done a lot.
Those were conditions for parcels one and two, which were already recorded. So I wasn't really clear on, I, I didn't want to reiterate conditions that were, you know what I'm saying, for, since those parcels were already recorded, yes.
Well, okay, I got confused because the letter says that the final map was recorded in 2015, which included satisfaction of a portion of the conditions of approval for phase three and four. And that's the ones we're concerned with here. I mean, I don't want to have the resolution include something that's irrelevant to what's before us, but if it is relevant, it should be included.
Make a suggestion maybe to add last sentence or continuation of the last sentence, which says that the parcels three and four will meet the, the requirements of the negative declaration mitigation requirements, some kind of wording like that, Madeline.
Is the final be further resolved that the conditions of MEP 2013-008 will apply, not, not covering that? You want that in part three? Something additional in part three? Peter, what do you, how would you like to see this?
Well, as I understand it, have all the conditions been satisfied so they're ready to record?
That is to be reviewed when they record the map?
We're not quite at that point of having made that determination yet. The applicant's ready to submit the final map. Part of the review is to make that determination that the conditions have been satisfied prior to the recording. You know, as we noted in the staff report or in the presentation, that this finding isn't really required of a parcel map extension. We really, I mean, it's probably a good idea to have it, you know, to, as a basis for our recommendation that, you know, they're pursuing it, it's just not sort of being extended on forever, but there isn't an actual requirement that they have made a good faith effort, as is required for a subdivision map. Why it's different, I can't tell you, that's just what our code says. So, you know, we could simply delete this, this finding if, you know, there were concerns about it. I don't think it harms anything to have it in there as sort of, you know, a basis, but, you know, so it's, it's not something that we have to be very precise about the language of this finding.
Okay, well, it sounds to me, since it's not required, it's probably more troubling as worse to start including more references to more things they've done.
Yeah.
Okay, that's all I had.
I have one suggestion. Again, at the top of page two, I certainly agree with taking out the sentence about the current general plan land use designation. But the staff report talks about parcel sizes of 40-plus or minus acres. And we've just been reassured that the three and four will be more than 40 acres. The resource production acreage, they're really, under the new general plan, there are resource production properties that are less than 40 acres, so I hesitate to put in with the minimum parcel sizes of 40 acres. What I'd suggest is that that language be deleted from the end of the sentence and at the beginning of the sentence, say as long as each of the resulting parcels will be at least 40 acres, the project is consistent with the.
I'm not sure that as long as, because it is. And maybe what we just need to do is with minimum parcel size of 40 acres, we could just move that phrase up to the end of the first sentence.
Well, I hesitate to say anything that that's a, that every resource production land has to be at least 40 acres. It's, it's the requirement at any, any subdivision of a resource production land has to end up with parcels of at least 40 acres.
Can't we just say the 40-acre proposed parcels are consistent with? Just swap that sentence around.
That's fine.
Yeah.
And, yes, I think that's, that's fine. If it was that the, the staff report was saying 40-plus or minus, and that raised the question. But yes, I think if you just say resulting 40-acre parcels.
Well, they're, they're not exactly 40 acres. They're over 40.
Not at least 40 acres.
40-acre minimum.
Well, let's not use that minimum. Let's just say the resulting parcels of 40 acres or more. With, with, with parcels of 40 acres or more, comma, the project is consistent with the general plan land use designation.
So it seems like the item that's kind of up in the air right here is three, that we don't absolutely need to make a finding of good faith. However, I think this does summarize what has happened and explain why it is appropriate for them to have an extension. So I'd be reluctant to just eliminate that finding entirely, which I think, Mr. Booster, is what you were thinking.
I, I don't have a problem including it as is. There's a little worry here that when we, when the commission includes this sort of a finding time after time, that somebody at some point might say, well, as a matter of practice, it's been required, and therefore it is required.
Well, I know it's going to address my staff on this issue at the next staff meeting, so. Probably see some revised language in future extensions.
We could just change it. Good faith effort to has diligently pursued a solution or anything along those lines, right? That's not exactly the word.
The evidence supports the granting of the extension, and then put some evidence in there.
Well, maybe the difficulty is with the lead-in sentence. The applicant has made a good faith effort to complete the map conditions because that's what's not required. And actually, that's not what the evidence is speaking to.
Do you just want to change that to the applicant has diligently pursued recording the map?
Yes.
That would be fine. Or pursued a solution to allow recording of the map.
Did we ever settle on the language in the top paragraph about the project is consistent with the general plan? Maybe it ought to say the project is consistent with the general plan land use designation of resource production with parcel sizes of at least 40 acres.
That's fine.
Are there any other comments on the resolution? Madeline, do you feel like you got all that?
Yes.
So are we ready for recommendation?
Staff recommends the planning commission adopt Resolution 2019-068 as amended, approving a four-year extension of time for approved tentative parcel map 2006-007 from Maxwell Freeman, based on the findings included therein.
I so move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations.
And this action also is final unless appealed to, to the board supervisor within 15 days.
Okay. Are there any commissioner reports?
No.
Commissioner Ladish is back. And apparently very well-operating him.
Bionic man.
And planning director reports?
Well, you're probably well aware that two days ago, the board adopted the general plan.
Woo-hoo!
And you guys should be very proud of the hard work that you put into it. And the public and the board recognize your effort. If you hadn't been listening, I just wanted to let you guys know that your hard work was appreciated by everyone. So next up is implementation. And I'm working on a study session for the board on how they want to set their priorities and where we get started. We've already begun working on a countywide rezoning map to bring the zoning into compliance. And the board also approved a grant, a filing of a grant application, SB 2 grant, which is the housing grant, and I'll be working, finalizing that, needs to be submitted by the end of the month. It's a non-competitive grant, so there's two payments or two rounds of $160,000 each, so we're eligible for $320,000. And the board has already identified a couple of housing element measures, primarily some of the ones you guys identified as being high priorities. And I'm drawing a blank on exactly what those were, but they had to do with updates to the building code, including the Title VIII rural density owner-built housing standards. And to work with the communities to identify where some of the issues are, particularly in the acute-fire recovery area. So that's something we'll be working on in the immediate future, and then we'll be prioritizing where do we start with implementation?
As a, as a comment on the director's report, it's hard for me to conceive that we could have done what we did without your remarkable ability to think on your, think on your seat, I guess.
Maybe that's why it's so short.
And, and come up with, with well-crafted resolutions of concepts we were dealing with and language that clarified what we were trying to do, as well as just all the grunt work that you and your department has done and county council has done in offering us good legal advice, along with our outside counsel. So we feel, I certainly feel that we were very well-supported, and we thank you.
Thank you, and you're welcome. And I think that's all I have.
And we are adjourned at 10:02, whatever time it says on the computer.